I'd like to call to order the regular meeting of the Abington School Committee on Tuesday, November 29, 2022, here in the Abington High School Library. I'm asking everybody, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Before we open up the regular meeting at the start, at the start right now, we're going to have a public hearing on school choice participation for Abington for the 2023-24 school year. At this time, if anybody would like to speak regarding our decision on school choice for next year, you come to the podium, but please state your name and address. Okay, seeing none, move on from there. I see nobody, seeing none, then I'm gonna close the public hearing. Next up, hearing of visitors. If anybody would like to speak, can you please raise your hand and I can invite you to go to the podium. I'm gonna ask you again to please state your name and address when you do. Okay, seeing nobody. We're gonna move on to the reading and approval of records. First up is our minutes from our last meeting in October. So after, get a chance to quickly review the minutes if you haven't already, I'll be looking for a motion to approve the minutes.
You can make the motion.
Is there a second?
Yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next up is unfinished business. As most of you are aware, at our last meeting, I gave, we gave notice of the potential to vote on the consideration of a change of school books. For the book, this book is gay, under, I forget the state law, but it's a Massachusetts state law, and I can look it up if I have to, but I think everybody here is aware that it's under a state law. At this time, I asked the committee if there's anything they would like to discuss about this topic. Yeah, oh yeah, Peter has a quick update about it, I'm sorry.
No, just, thank you. Just since our last meeting, I thought I should give a quick, a quick update with what has transpired about the book. And I wanna start by saying something I pretty much said last time at our last meeting, and that is that we all wanna support our LGBTQ community, and most especially our students. We work hard in schools to have safe and supportive environments for our students. Having said that, I can tell you that the discussion over this book has been stressful for many. Most of all, and regardless of anyone's intention, it's been stressful for our LGBTQ students. Prior to Thanksgiving, a protest was submitted from a community member regarding the book being an option to our students in this library. A seven-member review committee was assembled as described by policy KEC, Challenged Educational Materials. This group read the book, I wanna thank them for their work. They deliberated on the book, and the majority of that group recommended that the book stays on the high school-only side of the library. Therefore, the book will remain on the high school-only side of the library.
Thank you. Regarding that, and I should've, I should've stated, anything that anybody wants to discuss on this matter, if anybody wants to make a motion regarding the consideration of the change of books under the state law, any of that is open at this time.
I too, had a discussion.
Okay.
I just want to, if I could, give a short timeline of everything that's transpired, so that everyone's on the same page. Most of these are facts, some of them are my opinion. But on 9/22, for a fact, a parent had contacted the middle school, who then contacted Peter about a book. And she gay-reviewed the book because there was a lot in it that was graphic material. So, the book was taken out at that point, and Peter sent us an email, the school committee members, to let us know that he took out the book and the reason why. And it was a formal email, we all agreed, I guess, because nobody said anything back to him. So nobody spoke at all at this committee, or to Peter, about it at all. Like, we all basically stood behind him. So, nobody said anything otherwise. Then on 9/28, was our school committee meeting, and a parent came here to talk about inappropriate books, because she had been reviewing, I guess, books that were found at other schools depicting sex and graphic content. So, she was talking about it with her children, I guess, and somebody found a book. Okay. So, she just wanted everybody to know. And what she said was, a book was found depicting sex, graphics asked, and she asked if a policy can be put in place to review the books before they came to the library. So, she didn't say that she wanted the books gone, you can re-watch the meeting, that's exactly what she said. She just wanted a policy in place. And then Peter started talking about, under his authority, he took the polit, he took the book out according to policy, which was right. So, again, we all stood behind him. And then, for the, then he said that if there are any other books, or any other issues, there's a process to follow, process for community, parents, whoever, if they feel uncomfortable, to bring it forward to him. And there, he, there's an informal process, and it's a very productive way if something stands out, but if nothing stands out, it's important to follow a more formal process so it can be appropriately vetted. So, at that point, I spoke up and said, I wanna be on this committee, because it was the first time that I ever even heard about a process. A process means a policy. So, that policy was never given to any of us on the school committee. So, me, I should've done my homework, knowing that we had a policy, but no one else here, I'm sure, knew if I didn't know. So, that's why I said it, that I wanted to be on the committee, because it was the first time that I ever heard about it. And knowing that there was a book that was in our middle school, it was concerning to me if it had graphic content and everything in it. At no point did she say anything about LGBT students. So, I don't understand how this all came to play. The next person that did come up and speak, spoke about, it was a different gentleman, he spoke about concerns, because the state hasn't acted like a policy where teachers, guidance counselors can, you know, I guess, help out students, right, without telling their parents if there's, if they wanna change their gender, or name, or anything like that. So, when this man came to speak, he said, hey, can you just let us know as parents? You know, we still wanna be involved, we have the children, they're ours. So, I didn't see anything wrong with him saying that. Another thing that he had mentioned was the JEM club. And I personally understand where he was coming from when he said that he didn't understand it, because I had actually came to Peter prior to that and said, what is this club? I don't get it. And the reason why, and I just wanna read it to you, is, it's just, it doesn't make sense how it was announced. It says JEM, Gender Empowerment Mission. This club is currently structured to empower female identifying students with members across the gender spectrum. The goal is to provide a forum for both voicing opinions about gender equality in our school and collaborating for change. Our first meeting is Wednesday. So, that was, that's hard for him to understand, and hard for parents to understand, it would probably be hard for some students to understand. So, I get where he's coming from by just saying, hey, like, what is this? Can you just let us know? That's all that was said. Like, nobody said anything about the LGBTQ commi, community. It was the next day, because there was a teacher here, or, you know, certain members of the community, that took it and spun it, and said that, you know, both of these people were combined, neither one of them even know each other, had nothing to do with each other. Then all of a sudden, I'm a cult leader, I had nothing to do with this either. Like, it had, I, I found out after the fact. And I actually thought that there was only seven books, because that was all the list that I was given. So, this school committee didn't even have a list yet, when all of a sudden, the list was given by Peter to four people at the school, four staff members. Those staff members, one of the staff members gave it to students. So, from there, the, it exploded, saying, okay, this is the list. The girl, the, the mother never even read anything from it. You know, she just said, hey, these are the books that I know about, these are the ones that I just want you to look into, to make sure that they're not, they're, they're in the appropriate side, or if they should be pulled, maybe they should be pulled, but at least look into it. So, from there, not only was, there was a, a page made, there was a petition made, and the petition was, you know, I understand where people are coming from, but the petition that was made, it said that it was made by Abington High School. And then, the information that was given in it was just incorrect, like, the, the library wasn't closed for any certain reason, like, it had to do, there was just a lot of misinformation. So, I feel like all of this is a lot of misinformation. And then, a, a social media page was made, and a lot of parents are on the social media page, some teachers are on the social media page, and community members. So, then, when they all start talking and mixing up things, then it gets even more confusing. If anybody has any questions for me, or anybody else here, I'm sure we would answer. If you wanna meet me after here, I'll go sit out in the cafeteria and talk to every single one of you about whatever you wanna know. I'm an open book, and I'm sure everybody else is here too. We're here to represent all of you. There's all, there's five people on this board, we all represent, there's 17,000 people on this community, different people, you know? So, you do have a diverse committee on here, because everybody has something that has, they're in common with somebody else, you know, in the community. So, from there, you know, I mean, I feel like too, like what you said with the LGBTQ community, community, it's hard enough for kids, dealing with like the pressures of everyday life, that, you know, having people think that they're bigots, or that there's a problem with them, which is so untrue, and I, I just feel like it's, just brought it to another level, that it didn't have to be at at all, because, you know, the people that are only getting hurt from there are our students. So, after that, there was a review committee that was put together by Peter. And the review committee, I found a problem with it, because it didn't, when I finally realized what the policy was and read through it, it didn't make sense. He followed the first part of the policy, you know, by saying that it was an amicable decision, and, you know, it went, wow. The second part of the policy, after we got flak, you know, flak from some parents emailing, is when he said, okay, I'm going to, I'm gonna put together a review committee. But that wasn't part of the policy. So, that's why then I said, okay, this isn't the first time that policy hasn't been followed. It's more than that, it's a lot more than that, and that was basically where I put my foot down to say, okay, this is like, I'm too tired that I've noticed policy isn't being followed, we have to do something else here. You can't have this review committee, you didn't do it right. And so, that's when he said, okay, I'm just gonna put it back. And I, sorry, you know, we got, like, he thinks that's his decision to put it back. So, I called MASD to find out, the MASD is the Massachusetts Association of School Committees, we have a representative, and they thought that, excuse me, they thought that we should stick with the first part of the policy, that the school committee should say, you know what, you took this book out, that was the first part of the policy, you should stick with it. But at that point, it was like, all kinda over and done with, and we couldn't get back to that point. So, and that's when they had said, hey, you know, I don't know actually if it was they that said it, or if it was presented to me that there was a law. And so, I said, okay, then let's go with the law, because we have to do something that follows some sort of policy. You can't just go back and forth whenever you feel like it. So, from there, that's when I found out that there is a law, that we can use the law, and so, I contacted the chair and asked him if he could put it on the agenda, and he agreed and said that it would be, like, spoken about at the next school committee meeting or thereafter. So, and I confirmed like eight times with Chris to make sure that, you know, what was happening was going to happen. So, like, and then, we come to the school committee, and, you know, I mean, I, it was just, it's just crazy the way that this has turned out, with like the sides, and I don't understand, like, why it's gotten this far over, if, if, the thing has been said that if, if Jamie didn't come, sorry, if the parent didn't come, then none of this would be happening. So, the book would've just gone away, nobody here complained about it, nobody here said anything about it, and it would've been fine. But, since it was brought up, then, you know, it made a mountain over a molehill, or whatever, you know, to some people. And so, that's why it was changed. So, last school committee meeting, there was, you know, big ruckus, like, I just think everything's getting out of control, like, you know, parents are saying that other parents are getting threatened, you know, there was a mom that was being called memes, like, just walking by people at last school committee. So, it's just gotten way out of control, I think we should all bring it back down for our kids, for our students, and just reel this back in. You know, I mean, to me, personally, with the book, I don't care, I don't have any problems with the book. I've said it thousand times to everybody, whatever happens in high school happens in high school. You know, like, everybody knows that high school kids are subjected to a lot, they can see a lot, they have phones, whatever. This book particularly, to me, my problem is, beyond the sex part of it, is the app part of it, is the encouraging, whether people say it's encouraging or not, to me it is, about the book, like, saying things about, you know, how to connect with people online. And I don't like that. I don't, I, we see all the time, I'm sure the police officer that's here right now can attest to, all of, you know, the issues that have happened with young children, you know, being raped, taken, sex traffic, like, there's so much. And that, I would never want to put a, a price tag on our kids in that way. So, I will reneg this law, and...
Yeah, there's no reneging, I mean, I just put...
Well, I, I, I'm sure nobody else, like, if this is what the review committee wants, and what they wanna do with it, that's fine. However, what I would ask, and if we could vote on this, is for there be to, like, a 16 and over tag on some of these books, so that people know, I mean, 16 is, I think, the right to have sexual relations if you want, hopefully with...
I don't know.
...your same age, I don't remember, I don't know either, to be honest with you. But if there was some sort of, just like, I mean, 'cause I don't wanna make it hard for people either, but, or if the librarian could, you know, I don't know if it's sending a note home, to say, hey, your, your, your student took out this book, I don't know, I just feel like...
I thought I read something somewhere, I didn't mean to interrupt.
No.
I thought I read something somewhere in the policy where a parent, and I'll have to look off to go back, 'cause I mean, to your point, the policy's big, and we don't know everything, but nobody does. But that apparent could submit something saying not to let their child take something out. If that's the case, I think that kinda covers it, the parent submits something saying not to let their kid, I don't know if it's there or not. We can, we can look, in terms of making a decision on something, and we can't go on tonight, I don't know if that would have to go through, become, I don't know if that would become a policy or not, we can talk about that after. But, I mean, if you and I had a policy subcommittee, so we, if that would be something that's a policy, we can talk about if we wanted to do that, or whatever, I just can't go on something like that tonight, though, that's all.
If you're willing, or if anybody else is willing to take that step and have a meeting for the policy subcommittee and come up with something, and then we can bring it back to committee, the committee votes, and this is a democracy.
Excuse me, excuse me, excuse me, can, I'm sorry, but I have to ask you not to interrupt.
Because, because we can't, like, I mean, it's just, that's just the way it goes. So, anyway, I'm trying to compromise here, I don't know if everybody is willing to do that, so...
I'd like to say a couple things, too.
Peter had asked me if you could just address one of the things that came up, so if you don't mind, Julie.
Yes.
Wendy, you, you know, I've had talked a lot during this whole process.
Yes.
And you know some of the things that you mentioned tonight, you and I disagree on. But one thing I just wanna point out, from my perspective and my role, is initially, I read small excerpts from the book, and I took the book off, I took, I took the book, that's my responsibility, I did that. It wasn't because I got a lot of flak from parents that the book went back. It was because the discussion started to take place, I thought long and hard about my responsibility, and what it means to take a book from a library. And then I read the book. I decided to put the book back because I believe the information in context cautions people around sex, cautions around safe sex, and cautions about online behavior. And those are the messages that I believe were provided by those chapters. And then, if you take a look at the whole book, in its entirety, it is a book that I think students could get good information from. I don't like the upper sense of humor, but the information in there, I think moreover keeps kids safe. And so, that's, that's why I decided to put the book back. It wasn't because of flak, because if you've ever, I mean, if you've been around Abington the last couple weeks, there's been a lot of flak. And if I were trying to avoid flak, I'm doing a really crappy job of it. So, that's, that's the one piece I just wanted to ask to address.
Okay. Thank you. Go ahead, Julie.
I just wanna make a couple of clarifications. So, the, excuse me, the meeting where this all started, I missed the public comment 'cause they're all very late, got the time wrong, that was my fault, but I did watch it afterwards on YouTube from Abington Cam. To say that this wasn't about LGBTQ kids is false. The gentleman that got up and asked about JEM ended up being sort of cut off by Chris because he made a statement, I believe, that transgender kids have mental illness. So, that was said. The list of books that came forward, yep, she admitted she didn't read them, and maybe in the meeting, she did just ask for them to be looked at, but she also said, I found these books in the library, which I'm not sure was true, didn't ask her. And then, a list was submitted, and there were very specific comments about every single book, about why this person felt that these books were inappropriate. And those reasons were LGBTQ themes, saying bad things about police, too sad, didn't like the movie but didn't read the book, or watched one episode of the show, didn't like it. So, to say that she was just asking us to review it also is not true. One thing I do agree with you, Wendy, the toll that this is taking on these kids, I'm not sure that any of these parents who have gotten up and said some of these things that they said last time, really understand. Kids are having a really hard time with this, kids are thinking of harming themselves because of this, kids are feeling like, why do these parents care so much about what we do with our lives? And I'm seeing it firsthand, and I, so I agree with you, Wendy, it needs to stop the way that this is affecting these kids. That's all I have to say about it.
Thank you, Julie.
Yeah, I think she said that it wasn't her writing, then she just...
Well, then she shouldn't have submitted something with comments that she couldn't stand behind.
Well, I mean...
All right, I know, yeah.
It is what it is.
Yes, go ahead, Heidi.
There's a lot, and there's a lot to unpack. I sat on the committee, and the first time I heard about the book, I thought, yep, nope, that's not cool. And I went to bed, and I woke up, and I thought, well, before I make that decision, I should read the book. And I have since read the book in its first iteration, I have read the book in its second iteration. I listened to the audiobook, so I could hear somebody else's take on how they intended the book to be presented. And then I asked for more books, because I realized I had nothing to compare this to. But going back, the person with the original concern, I met with her, we read a book, we discussed a book, we agreed to understand that we might not always agree, but we did agree that uncomfortable books can often save lives. Talking about putting ages on things, in our discussion, we talked about the fact that we talk a lot about alcohol and drug awareness in our schools, yet none of our students are legally legal aged to drink at any time that they walk our halls. We start early in advance of to prepare these kids for what's to come. Driver's edge, you start that information before you are legally allowed to sit behind a new book. Having a book on a shelf that discusses sex, sexual acts, things like that, that allows our students the ability to see and prepare for what's out there in advance of time, so that they have the ability to understand processes, to understand how to keep themselves safe, to understand how to say no thank you, or let's rethink this, or to be kind. I learned a lot in reading of not just this book, but the other ones like it. The other books I read had way more, I will say. I read a lot of letters from students, extraordinarily well-written letters from kids that I admire. They're the reason I sit here. I realize, I personally, sorry for saying this out loud to kids, but I probably don't talk to my own kids enough. And I'm sorry for our students that I didn't read these books sooner, because I came to a lot of this in a place of a lack of understanding myself. So, to have a book sit on a shelf, if our students wanna come sit in the corner of the library and read something that might help them, save them, or open their minds to having a higher understanding, I fully support that, and I fully support them. And this book was not written just for gay kids, it was written for straight kids, and confused kids, and confused adults, and straight adults and gay adults, and basically anyone who's human who likes to read or listen to audiobooks. So, that's why I'm, I'll sleep well tonight. I understand that not everyone is going to necessarily agree with my viewpoint and the points that I brought to our committee, but if you haven't had a chance to read it from cover to cover, I will say it's going to read a lot differently that way than looking at snippets of things that were alarming and jarring with a very sad tone, which forgive me, I did find pretty funny. The author is someone I would sit and have a cup of coffee with, and if you know me, then that means something, so, sorry, I just spoke for a very long time.
It's okay.
But, and thank you to our students, you're brave, and you're awesome, and you're hard working, and I thank you for citing things that were well researched and were just extraordinarily good. So, thank you.
Heidi, thank you for being on the review committee, thank you to the rest of the review committee for also being on that. And so, I, I guess, I guess the only thing, I'm, like, so Wendy, to your point, when Peter emailed us, I didn't have a, I didn't give any feedback the first time he emailed us about putting it away, or the second time about putting it back, I, part of it is, in my, my feeling is that that's a decision that's made by the school administration. Personally, whatever it is, whether I agree with it or not, it's not my, my role to change, to change that, I can offer my opinion if I need to. So, that's where, either way, that ended up, I support the decision of those put in place to make it at whatever time, so, and it's the same way when I put this on the agenda last time to vote on this. If, if, if this is something anybody wants to do, that's why it's here tonight. I told you it'd be on the next agenda, it's on the next agenda. So, that's kinda where I came down on most of it. If, wherever those put in place to make the decisions on the materials that are here for our kids, I trust them to make their best judgment on it. If it comes a point where I have to offer a decision or vote on it, I will, I always have, but until that time, the reason no, nobody would've seen an email from me going back and forth with Peter, well, first of all, probably, it wouldn't have been a reply haul anyway, but it also, it would've, it's in line with whatever decision he feels is best for our, our district, so. Does anybody else have anything to add? All right. So, anything else on this topic at all? Tonight? All right. So, up next, you...
What question, I, sir, is this, are we done with this, or is it going to remain on the agenda, or are we saying we're done, it's no longer unfinished business?
I mean, I can't say what the agenda will always be in the future.
Right, and you're like, this particular item will continue, I've just gotten a lot of questions from, like, people in the public wondering kind of what it means to have it, like, as unfinished...
At this moment, I can tell you, I, I, right now, I probably don't plan on having it on January 6th, yeah.
Great.
Okay. But I can't, I can't promise you that.
No, I understand, but it's not gonna remain as a holdover because we didn't...
No, I mean, it didn't have to be on this one either. I mean, I, even like the last one, we said a future one, I decided this, that it would go on here, and we'll see where it takes us.
Okay.
So, so, up next, reporter director of the Curriculum Instruction and Assessment, Dr. Bost, are you starting it?
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, good evening, everyone. Thank you for providing this time for myself and our department chairs for Science, MAP, and ELA, to present information about last year's MCAS administration. Through tonight's presentation, you will see that generally, our students did well, and we have a few areas to continue to work on as a district to support all students. Please feel free to ask questions, members of the school committee, as we move through the presentation or at the end. So, you might be familiar with the Nation's Report Card, which is an assessment given to a sampling of students in grades four and eight around the country every two years. Abington has not been randomly selected for participation in this in many years, however, it does give us a view at where we are as a nation post-pandemic. However, it does give us a view at where we are as a nation post-pandemic. Though every state in the nation saw a decline on the assessment since its last administration in 2019, Massachusetts continues to rank first in the nation overall when scores are averaged for all subtests, math, reading, writing, and science. Additionally, some information about our MCAS testing over the last few years. Due to the pandemic, the 2022, last year, school year, was the first full MCAS administration for grades three through eight since 2019. And it's important to note that for many of our students in all grades, it was the first time they had taken an MCAS at all since 2019. Here's a quick look at how state, students in the state performed on MCAS last year and 2021 and 2019. There was no administration in 2020. The Department of Elementary and Secondary Education has indicated that the state average performance decline may have plateaued. So we've been seeing scores drop over the last few years, but they think that it's plateaued, that, in other words, the recovery has started to show for our students. DESI has identified chronic absenteeism as a barrier across the state to a full recovery. Chronic absenteeism since 2019 has increased by 138%. DESI recommends that this year's data, 2022, is used by districts as a new benchmark from which to measure future growth. Comparing last year's scores to previous years before the pandemic is not productive. Since the data was released in October, our teachers have been working together and individually to analyze the data down to specific questions to see how we can support our students, but also how we can improve our instruction and curriculum. Does anybody have any questions about the state data? Onto Abington's data. This chart represents grades three through six, three through six for ELA. Last year, you can see our students scored above or at the same level as students in the state for meeting and exceeding performance.
Just to clarify, these third grader, this year's current fourth graders?
Correct. These are students from last year, so this year they're one grade up.
Yes, what is the 399s?
That's the, that's the difference between where our students were and the state.
Conceivably.
Yep.
Pretty good.
So we typically talk about our strengths and recommendations based on how students performed in each area. I'll let you read that. I just want to make sure that everyone remembers, MCAS is testing how our students are performing related to the state standards, and that's what we use as a district as the foundation for our curriculum and our programming. As we revise and refine our curriculum and programming, this MCAS data will help inform our work in addition to identifying new ways for us to support our students with targeted intervention. Any questions about the strengths or recommendations that are up there? All right. Onto math. As you can see here in math, our third to sixth grade students were also at or above the state average for meeting or exceeding expectations. Where we're either above or below by one point, I would say that's not statistically relevant. Respect, is that right? We don't want respect to get in the way of this presentation. Any questions about the third grade to sixth grade math? Same thing, areas of strength and areas for growth. We started prior to the pandemic, a fifth through 12th grade math curriculum committee that was slowed down because of the pandemic, like most things. We're currently restarting that work, knowing that the needs of our students changed dramatically because of the pandemic, but also the landscape in the publishing market has changed. So texts, textbooks, programs that the committee was looking at before the pandemic have been updated, have changed, there are new versions, or there are new approaches to teaching math that are now available. So the committee has reformed, we've restarted our work. You may have seen a parent survey that went out to gather information for all parents in the district because down the road, we'll be doing the same committee work but for K-4. We'll be using the data from that survey as well as our MCAS data and other information that we have to help the committee make a, a well-rounded decision as far as what's best for the students here in Abington. In addition to math instructional practices and textbooks, the committee will be looking at our structures that impact math instruction, including course progressions and school schedules. We are on schedule to finish that committee's work by next November, where hopefully we'll make a recommendation for how to move forward for grades five to 12 in math. And I will keep the school committee updated as that work progresses. You'll hear a little bit more about this potentially when we move to grade seven to 12 math also. Does anybody have any questions about this slide or anything I just said?
Yes, please. And this is actually more about what was your response like to the survey that went out?
It was, it was actually really good.
Good.
Yeah, usually, and by, by response, you just mean comment. I assume, yeah. It, it wasn't all positive information.
No.
That's not what I meant by good, but the last time I looked, there were over 200 responses.
Excellent. Is it, do we have a close date for...
It's still open.
Okay. So anyone who hasn't responded yet still has a chance to respond?
Yeah.
And I'm assuming that, that being put out on the heels of MCAS scores following people's mailbox is probably helping a little bit.
Right.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay.
Can I ask actually a quick question?
Yep.
You know how we changed the math curriculum, the books, a couple of years ago? Here? Remember, we changed that, was it Envision? What did we change?
Envision was adopted several years ago, and then there was an updated version that was just purchased in 2020, 2021?
Do you think that's what helped with these scores?
Potentially. That, that's part of the work that the committee will be doing, trying to understand.
Okay.
Yeah. That's a good question. Hopefully, we'll have answers for you. Any other questions? Okay. So students take a science MCAS in grades five, eight, nine, and for some students in grade 10. Here you can see that last year, our grade five students performed above the state average in meeting and exceeding expectations by two points. As we transition to the secondary school portion of this presentation, our science, math, and English department heads, I called you chairs before, I'm sorry. Our department heads will be taking over, starting with our science department head, Nicole Corbett.
Good evening. My name's Nicole Corbett. I'm the science department head for grades seven through 12, and I'm here to present the eighth and ninth and a little bit of 10th grade MCAS data. So as you can see, the MCAS scores for grade eight in 2022 were 18 points behind the state average in regards to students meeting or exceeding expectations. What's not showing in this graph is that grade eight was 19 points above the state average in regards to students partially meeting expectations and one point above the state average in regards to students not meeting expectations. So obviously, we would like to shift the partially meeting expectations over to meeting or exceeding expectations going forward. This is not a new trend. This is something that, looking back on years of data, this has been ongoing. Any questions on that? Yes?
I just think from, from what I remember and from having a son in this particular eighth grade class, is as we see the data, it, it's not anything new. Like you said, it's, it's been that way. It's trending that, that class has had its challenges.
Yeah, definitely. And we're seeing that to the freshmen this year, and we're definitely seeing the challenges, whether some of that may be COVID-related learning loss or just overall as well. I think believing prior to COVID, there was some noticeable gaps in knowledge with this particular class.
I think Danielle just kind of answered the question I had in her question. So Ms. Corbett, I was going to say, did that group also, was it like that three years ago when they would have taken the grade, like, is it possible to see that? Do you guys have that data for where, what they were in grade five?
I can get that data as well, yeah. And we can take a look.
Is it?
Some ongoing trends, but yes.
That particular...
We're definitely seeing some of the gaps as well in ninth grade coming up. All right. So 10th grade had kind of an interesting scale that they used to grade. So the vast majority of our 10th grade MCAS scores actually reflect to ninth grade MCAS score data. Most freshmen who enroll in biology do take the MCAS for biology. Students who do not pass those MCAS as freshmen are able to retake that test during the following February as a retake, and they are enrolled in a principles of biology class to reinforce materials they may have not understood during the first round of taking biology. Ninth grade scores this year were graded using two different scales. So the state gave us data on both the Next Gen MCAS scale and the Legacy scale. So the further class of 2025, which is this year's current sophomore class, the state was using the Legacy scale scores for competency determination, which is able to decide whether or not these students graduate. These skills do not correlate very well. So a student could score not meeting expectations on the Next Gen scale, which, but could score, but that could correlate to a needs improvement on the Legacy scale. So the Legacy scale scores were used to determine whether or not the student is going to graduate ultimately or need to retake the test. On the Legacy scale, on the right, students, the district scored nine points above the state average. But on the Next Gen scale, we were one point above the state average in terms of meeting or exceeding expectations, and on the Legacy scale, that's advanced their profession. So, yes.
When will we get rid of the comparison?
Next year. This, this coming year. So they did this, I think, if they decided to redo this for 2023, 2024, and 2025, those classes. So it was definitely a confusion correlation when we tried to go back and look at the data and pull out what students did, how well they did, who had met the competency determination, who didn't. They make it easy. Any other questions on that slide? All right. I just threw this in kind of as an example. The Next Gen Biology MCAS were introduced during the past spring for grade nine. As a department, we are working collaboratively with students in grades seven through 12 to determine areas where students are struggling, mostly, struggle most with the eighth and ninth grade MCAS and focus on those areas when designing the curricula and planning on units and lessons. We are also working more with students on these computer-based MCAS practice questions. We do spend quite a bit of time working with students on practice MCAS questions, but this is a new platform for our ninth graders. The eighth graders have been using this for a couple of years now. So this platform does leave some room for error. So this is an example question where students had to drag and drop the different alleles in the Punnet square and try to make cross-references. And if you're a student, you've kind of gone quick or you're tired, you might end up dragging and dropping in the wrong box, and then you don't go back and check your work, and this can get a little bit confusing. And additionally, those alleles don't disappear when they drag and drop, they stay there. So we were practicing with some of the questions. And we can see areas where students might trip up a little bit and have to, you know, practice going back, looking carefully. So it's a little bit different than when you handwrite your alleles out. You can take a little more time and care to do that. Any questions on that? All right. So and these are areas of strength and growth. Overall achievement for grade nine on both the Next Gen and Legacy scoring systems, we exceeded the state. We are a very collaborative department. We regularly need to discuss and align curricula with the 2016 Massachusetts Science Frameworks. And we incorporate a lot of hands-on activities in labs utilizing physical technology and equipment. We have vernier technology and software in various virtual learning platforms. And some recommendations, we're going to adjust areas of focus in the curricula based on student performance and results data, as I mentioned before. We continue to work on engagement by building or using physical and virtual labs and activities. We really like the hands-on component of the science classes, so we work with students a lot to continue that. And we have students work more with our online MCAS learning platforms and trying to get more familiar with those type of assessment styles. And that is all. Anyone has any questions?
I do.
Yes.
Surprise.
Hi.
Forgive me for not knowing, but the final MCAS that they need to pass in order to graduate, is that all-encompassing or is it only on that specific?
Subject-specific, which ends up making a big difference between eighth and ninth grade when you have an all-encompassing test that has multiple years of science knowledge, and then you have a more focused test in ninth grade, which is all biology-focused.
So the gaps that we're seeing from the previous slides, that in fact could be terminated by the time?
Right. Yeah.
Thank you.
Well, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Meg Darty, math department head. And I'm going to talk about math. At the secondary level, our students take MCAS math in grades seven, eight, and 10. In grade seven, they were seven points below the state average in meeting or exceeding. In grade eight, they were 12 points below the state average, which I will come back to later. And in grade 10, we were two points above the state average in meeting or exceeding expectations.
Meg, can I ask a quick question?
Sure thing.
It's more, it's more the trend. So like Dr. Bost has showed us grades three through six, and it's plus 13, plus nine, plus nine, plus 17. And then when it hits grade seven, eight, it goes down. Is it like, and maybe you're going to hit on it, but that was just, that's what caught my eye in seeing the trend from, the elementary is all improving, uh, higher than the state, but as we get to this junior high, it's not, so.
I think there's a couple of different things that we've kind of talked about, and the number one reason that we built a committee that's no longer seven through 12 in elementary. Now we have a five through 12 committee.
Okay.
Things are done very differently in grades five and six. They have more math time, and please correct me at any point if I'm wrong. They have more time dedicated to math throughout the weekend, throughout the day. When you get to the middle school, you now have a 49, 48-minute period.
Yeah.
So that time has been, so that's one of the things. There's also a transition from grades six to grade seven.
Completely agree with that.
And the other piece about it is that we have different materials. Up to grade six, we're using Envisions, and then grade seven and on, we're using Big Ideas.
Okay.
So that's one of the main reasons that we've been going ahead and choosing to do a five through 12 committee so that we can hopefully eliminate some of that issue between grade six and seven.
Okay, great, then. I'm sorry if I jumped ahead on you.
No, I appreciate that. In terms of our recommendations, our strengths, sorry, the high school, we had similarity, right triangles and trigonometry were some of our strengths at the high school. I had to say probability and statistics at grade seven because we always end up with that being a weakness, so it was nice to see it being a strength. Our grade eight, which is currently our grade nine cohort, lessened the gap between exceeding and meeting expectations from the previous year. And we've added staff to, so small group supports can happen both during and after the day. In terms of the recommendations, because we've been working so closely together, five through 12, you'll notice they're almost identical to grades, to the elementary piece. I'd like to speak a little bit about what you asked me last year. So last year, I was lucky enough to come back and ask about that eighth grade cohort that has been going on. So last year, I went back and I, you asked me about them when they were in grade seven. Based on the grade eight results, they're currently our freshmen, they're showing improvement. Although they're still below the state in meeting exceeding expectations by 12 points, last year they were behind the state by 18 points. So they're working at closing that gap. Their mean SGP is also 10 points above the state, which shows they are making gains. We continue to support them as they enter the high school as freshmen. We've added additional section of Algebra I to keep the classes smaller for them because we knew that they had been struggled in the past, been struggling in the past. We were also able to bring back math boot camp for our students who showed that they really needed to work on the most improvement. Our concentration needs and is at the middle school. Roughly 18% of the population, they're serviced by our interventionists. Each student sees an interventionist at least one of, once a week outside of the classroom for small intervention lessons. In addition, the interventionist... In addition, the interventionist goes into their classrooms once a week. This way, the interventionists work not only to fill gaps, but also to support what they're currently working on in their classrooms. In addition, there's an after-school program called Blue Boost, which is not specific to math, but will work, where students can get help on their assignments to plan for long-term projects and build healthy habits, so they can get help with their math homework there as well. Any questions? Is it okay if I slip, go forward to show them that slide? I don't want to mess you up.
It's okay. So don't you tip that.
I'll get that. So I know you like, this is our current grade math, grade nine math class, the cohort from when they were in grade four, five, and then seven and eight. So you can see that they're definitely making that trend smaller. This is where our current grade eight is, and you'll notice that they're rising above, and then our current grade seven math. So you can see, that right there shows where that gap lines every time at grade seven. So that's really where our concentration needs to be. Any questions?
I just had an overall comment, but just that, in general, too, it's really hard, because I know, you know, we want to put a lot on our teachers, but there's no denying that there's a drastic change in attitude and feelings about school in general, and that change from elementary school to junior high. And, I mean, there's no surprises, there's an attitude change about pretty much everything in those teenage years. So as a teacher, I like to put that human piece in there, too, is that everybody works so hard, and sometimes you can't put it into a slideshow for some of the things that are happening with the kids.
Same, follow. I just, I remember that meeting last year well. We looked at the numbers, and we all went, yo. And the conversations and what we're seeing, it's not easy to come back and say, like, here's where we're kind of falling apart. So I definitely appreciate, what's interesting is to hear the fact that the curriculum shift is kind of where you're starting to see. So I'll be interested to see what the curriculum committee kind of brings to the plate, because I'm, I will be supremely curious next year to see, not that MCAS numbers are an all-be-all because I have feelings and that's not the time and the place, but if we have a metric to use, it's going to be interesting to see where all this lies. And so thank you to you guys for doing a deep dive, and to our interventionists, because this is not, you know, it's not always amazing work. Thank you.
Great. It does. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening to everyone. My name is Dr. Liz Goncalves, and I'm the department head of English, grade seven through 12. And this slide is very much like the other slides you've seen. In grade seven, there is an eight-point difference with Abington exceeding in this category of the state. In grade eight, following a trend we've noted in both science and math, there is a 7% decline with the state exceeding Abington. And then in grade 10, we have 60% of our students meeting or exceeding expectations, 58 in the state. So we've bested the state by two. Are there any questions about this slide? I will speak, Ms. Graffin, to what you said, that oftentimes in grades seven and eight, there's a lot more besides the teaching and the learning in the classroom, particularly around reading. Not every student enjoys reading, and reading is one of those skills that gets better with practice and affection for the text that you're reading. Students either see themselves or don't see themselves. Many students enjoy reading graphic novels, they enjoy audiobooks, and they don't have the option to access the text in a different way. They must read the text that's provided for them, and so much of strong reading performance can be influenced by the selection of texts and how a student feels about reading. And one of the things that the English department has done is maintained a strong set of summer reading recommendations. We come to the library regularly. We have book tastings. We want to hook students with books that they love and might like to read, so that they would continue reading and develop skills in reading, activating their prior experience, for instance. The other thing is, we see between any grade eight and grade 10, an increase in performance because it's a graduation requirement. There's a certain seriousness when you know your ability to walk across the stage depends in part on the performance in all three content areas. And in middle school, that level of seriousness and consequence is not there. And our current eighth graders, I believe, took half a test rather than a full test. And also, they are students who have had, when they are in the reading-to-learn stage, they've learned to read one through four, that was a stable experience for them, but also for the scope in five through eight, they had half a year of instruction, they had a hybrid year of instruction. They also didn't get the kind of reading feedback regularly at the high school that they might have, because the number of opportunities to receive feedback from teachers was decreased. We are pleased with this progress. We see that dip, which may be particular to this eighth grade, but is not uncommon for all eighth grades. Does that make sense?
Mm-hmm.
So I wanted to point out the strengths in student performance. In seventh grade, our students were especially strong in writing argument using evidence from two different articles and essays about two characters' challenges. This grade scored, if you wanted to consider rather than meeting and exceeding expectations, the earning of total points, they earned 4% more total points than the state, largely in part to their expertise in language and in writing. Our grade eight students had a really strong sense of language. They could analyze the purpose of punctuation, short sentences, and conventions, which is something that other groups have struggled with. So do they need to work on content? Yes. And when you look at the total number of points, they were only 2% behind the state. And it looks much larger when we look at the scaled scores and the categories of meeting and exceeding expectations, but they're really very close in every standard, just below the state by one or two percentage points. In grade 10, something we've been working with for a long time now, authors craft and structure decisions on sentence and paragraph levels. So now they're just not reading content, they're thinking about how the author arranges the content and delivers it to the reader, and they can make some pretty sophisticated decisions about why and how that happens. All students at all grades respond to essay items in both content and conventions, for all students and in many subgroups stronger than students across the state. And I really do think that is in part to all our teachers in all curricular areas, using writing as a form of assessment, and holding students accountable for their conventions, and giving them a response that's just not a number or a letter, but detailed feedback and comments. So students really feel that they're writing for an audience who is going to attend to their work, and I think that's why Abington students often excel in writing. So what do I recommend? More comparison of multiple genres and texts on similar topics. It might be they would read a narrative and a poem, a piece of a play and a piece of nonfiction. In the English Language Arts, students are actually often asked to look at pictures and graphs and to make sense of them. So not just reading novels and stories in the English Language Arts, but multiple kinds of texts is important. To focus on inferential reading comprehension in discussion and writing, to read between the lines. Very often, these questions say, the author suggests something. And to kind of get those cues in text without an array of other pieces of information, from sound, from sight, from someone's voice, is difficult. I think we get how something is said, and we might not get it in print. And you can think about the tone in emails and texts that we often miss, but we get when we talk to people. Teachers are going to continue to provide regular feedback on reading comprehension and writing with revision opportunities. Very often, it's that second draft or that do-over that allows a student an opportunity to really understand where they might have gone astray and how they can get back on track. And also, our grade seven, for the first time in MCAS history, exceeded the state on selective answer responses, meaning they did better on multiple choice than the state did. We need to practice selection of the best answer on multiple choice, especially, I think Ms. Corbett has shown, that sometimes there are multiple acceptable answers and partial credit can be given, and we need to nudge students along to better performance on those kinds of items. And we will continue to use iXL as a targeted intervention tool in both middle school and high school. And when I looked at their performance, particularly in grade seven, I know we used iXL in elementary school and middle school to fill in some of those gaps, especially in distance learning, and we're starting to see a payoff in MCAS scores, because they are doing similar kinds of assessments in their intervention. Are there any questions?
Just a few overall comments, if that's okay.
Sure.
Just a few things from what Dr. Vasta had said as well, just the chronic absenteeism, mental health issues, attention deficits for all, perhaps stemming from an exorbitant amount of time spent on devices during COVID learning, study habits, general apathy, all the things that we've been battling in the classrooms. So I just wanted to commend the teaching staff for the work that they've done, the students for all the work that they've done to overcome all of these crazy challenges and obstacles that none of us ever had to deal with. So I know these are numbers. I, I really don't love that we have to go through things like this, like MCAS. I wish we could just be pushing the kids to read and write and continue developing that love for it, and not worry about these multiple-choice questions that have multiple tricky options for them. But I know that you are doing an amazing job, and I just wanted to say that for all of our teachers. We certainly have work to do, always work to do, developing as teachers, but there is a lot that we have all been battling as a staff, as students, as parents, and it is commendable to see the groups improving.
Thank you so much. I will tell you that one of the, it's a kind of two-part response. Our students are so fortunate to have this library and to have it well-served, and for teachers to take the risk to give students the gift of time. Those comfy chairs are some of my students' favorite places. We take a kind of nod from our art teachers who use studio time. Students don't go home and do artwork, they do it in school. And sometimes, school is the best place with the least amount of distractions, the fewest distractions. And if we're going to say that reading is important, we need to let students read in school. And I think our students, I've come in once a week, every Friday, with my sophomores, and I've seen over the last 10 weeks, some students who did not consider themselves readers in September are starting to consider themselves readers now, because they have, even though it's only 47 or 49 minutes of time, it's uninterrupted. And our students are really trying their best to juggle such challenging and exciting schedules that it's hard to fit time into reading. And I think we have to put our money where our mouth is as teachers, and if reading is important, then we need to do it in school, the same with writing. And I learned that from my art colleagues, who allow their students to create art in school. So we have to leave not just school for lecturing and assigning, but really permitting students the space to enter readers, enter the practice of reading and the practice of writing. So thank you for acknowledging that, I really do appreciate it.
And for all the adults at home, I know sports are important, but if we can also kind of push that at home a little bit, too, reading some books at home is good.
And I would say, an audiobook in the car, or while they're on a treadmill, or while they're doing something else, it's a really great way to read. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
Can I just, oh, use a wrap-up?
I was just going to wrap up, but if you want to wrap up, you can wrap up.
I was going to make one point, and then thank everybody. You go.
I will go. Does anybody have any additional questions?
And Danielle actually stole most of my wrap-up. So it's okay.
I felt like I needed to say something, I was quiet tonight.
No, thank you, thank you for saying that, because as you said, everyone, students, parents, teachers, has worked, have worked so hard for the last few years, it's important that we recognize it. And something that we sometimes forget is that the scores that we see are snapshot in time, but they do help us look at what we're doing as a district over time, but it's as a district. It starts in preschool and it goes all the way to 12th grade. It's not just the science that our students learned in fifth grade, it's from preschool on up, it all builds, you have to have that strong foundation. So I thank the school committee for giving us the time tonight. I thank you for supporting all of our educators and all of our students and families in Abington. I especially thank our department heads for participating tonight. And if you think of any other questions, please email me, and we will get the answers for you. Peter?
So I wanted to thank you all, Liz, Meg, Nicole, and you, Chris, but all of our teachers and their students. I mean, everybody worked harder during the pandemic and got less. And now there's more work to do coming out of the pandemic. One of the things I just wanted real quickly is, we compare ourselves to the state, not because that's good enough, but because that's the equalizer when we compare ourselves to, everybody had to deal with the pandemic. So that's why we use that number. And I appreciate you did it exactly the way we asked, not to editorialize, just give the numbers, you know, this is the number, and then we talk about the work we're doing to improve the numbers, because, yes, we want to do better than the state, but we want to do the best that we can do. Massachusetts is still either the highest or one of the highest performing states with their public schools in the country. And when you compare Massachusetts to other nations, we're also at the top of nations that participate in that testing. So comparing ourselves to the state is, that's why we compare ourselves to the state with those numbers. And so thank you for doing such a good job of that, without just giving us the numbers straight, the way they, the way they fall.
Thank you, guys. Thank you, everybody. Up next will be the reporter, the athletic director, Mr. Sharino.
Thank you. First off, thanks for the opportunity to share a brief update. We have a lot going on, so I'll try and keep it to a couple of key points. But first off, I just want to thank the committee and the administration for their continued support of the student athletes. We're very fortunate to have a community that values the full experience, not just the wins and losses and everything that goes into it. We just wrapped up our fall season last week. It was a very successful fall season. We had well over 200 students participating in athletics across a variety of sports at different levels. We had some phenomenal individual accomplishments, some great team accomplishments that we'll share publicly. We're still waiting on some postseason awards to be awarded, hopefully in the next couple of weeks before Christmas, we'll share that publicly, but didn't want to get into those, because some of those haven't been decided yet. But the biggest thing is that our kids are playing and participating in sports, which is great. Our winter season is starting up, today is day two, we just wrapped that up. And again, our participation numbers are holding strong globally across the board. Some sports are seeing a rise, some are seeing a decline, which is pretty typical, as you go through ups and downs with kids, particular interests based off the grade level. Sometimes there's a group that's heavy on one sport and lighter on another, and then usually in a couple of years, it kind of swings the other way. So everything's kind of on par. One thing that crosses over between the fall and the winter that I want to update this group on is the eighth-grade waiver. We are continuing to use that, and I think it is a clear benefit to the district as a whole. I think the obvious benefit that people see is that eighth graders can participate, which is great, and that is a definite benefit. We have a number participating, a strong group in the fall and a strong group again in the winter. But it's also creating additional opportunities for our students in grades nine through 12, which I think is essential to the reason that we do the waiver. We had a number of programs that were able to offer sub varsity teams, so that does a number of things. It keeps more kids engaged and involved, because in some cases, you might have too many kids for one team, but not enough for a second team. So without the eighth graders, you'd have to cut, because you could only have one team. So the infusion of the eighth graders allows those high school students that may have had to have been cut to still be in a program. And second, it allows them to be placed at the appropriate level. You're not asking freshmen to maybe stretch and play varsity when maybe they shouldn't. And in our experience, when you do that too much for too long, the sport begins to suffer, because you're asking freshmen to make the same commitment as an 18-year-old and compete against an 18-year-old, that's a big jump for a lot of kids. So by having the eighth graders, we can kind of blend that as we go. And just a reminder, the eighth-grade waiver is as needed, so it's not for every sport, so it's just when we have an opportunity to hold so it's just when we have an opportunity to hold on to a team by adding eighth graders. So for example, in the winter with hockey, we have some eighth graders participating at the varsity level. We only have a varsity team, but we had less than 20 skaters, so that's a light number for hockey with injuries or different things that crop up. So the infusion of a few eighth graders really helps us maintain a strong varsity team. And then on the other end of the spectrum with basketball, the girls, eighth graders were able, were able to field the JV team, and the boys were able to field the freshmen. So they will always play at the lowest level that we offer for each program, but that's different, which I understand is confusing. Some eighth graders get to play varsity, some have to play freshman, but it depends on the sport. But overall, it's been a great experience, it's not without hiccups, but I think it is overwhelmingly better success. Something that's new this winter is the girls' hockey program, so we have a girls' hockey co-op for the first time with Norwell High School. It's something that we began exploring eight years ago, and it's gone up and down with different interest levels, and we finally found a partner that works in Norwell. So we have three female student athletes that are able to play girls' hockey for the first time in our school history, which we're very excited about. It is a co-op, Norwell is the host school, so they will skate wearing Norwell sweaters, at least initially. We recognize that it's not a perfect situation, but it's better than them not being able to play or having to play on the boys' team. So we're working through a number of issues that we're aware of. The girls who are participating have been great, they have a lot of morning practices, we met with them to game plan and just go over some, just general life skills, like how do we do this, how are we gonna make this happen? They've been excited, and Norwell's been a great partner, but I do want to acknowledge that we recognize there are things we have to build on and improve on, but we were at the point that we wanted to jump in and go for it, because these girls would lose a year if we waited another year to iron out some of these details, and they've been very understanding of the situation as we go. And the last two things I just wanted to update you on pertain to next year, but they're relatively large changes for our student athletes and their families. Next year is a realignment for both our league and the MIA. So for the league, what that means is for the majority of our schedule are league games. So we have currently a 10, 10 members in the South Shore League, and next year we're expanding to include an 11th team, so Sandwich High School will now be a member of the South Shore League, and we will shift, so we're into two divisions. We are currently competing in the Sullivan Division, which is the five largest schools. This will be our second year, the previous four, we were in the Tobin Division, which are the five smallest schools. So with the introduction of Sandwich, we were due to realign anyways. Abington is now, or next year, will be on the Tobin Division, which is the smaller side. And the reason for that is our enrollment. So we, the league places schools based off of their enrollment, so the six largest schools make up the Sullivan Division, we are the seventh largest, so we will be the largest school in the smaller division, which is named the Tobin Division. On that side is Carver, Hull, Cohasset, and Mashpee. We will still play the schools on the other side, but we only play them once, and for most sports, your league championship is determined by your divisional placement, so there is a Sullivan Division champion and a Tobin Division champion. So that'll be different for our students and their families. It does mean some additional trips to Mashpee, because usually you play the team on your side once, now you play them twice, so every team will go to Mashpee, whereas it was in every other year before. But it certainly gives our kids the best opportunity to compete against like schools for league championships and so forth. And we were there for four years before, so it's not a mage, a major change. And second, the MIA, the state tournament level, that is on a realignment cycle as well. They have only shared the realignments for the fall of next year, the winter alignments are due out by this Friday. For the fall, all of our teams were aligned in the same division as they were previously, which runs the gamut. It's a little confusing, because football is eight divisions, some sports have three, so I can't say we're definitively here, but everybody was aligned in the same division as they were this current school year. We have, we do look at each sport individually, and if there are circumstances that dictate an appeal, where you can ask the MIA to put you in a different division, either up or down, based off certain reasons, we will do that. So we examine each sport, I have a conversation with the coaches as well as the administration and say, does it make sense or does it not? And we do anticipate potentially applying for some of those appeals. Will they be granted? I don't know, but we will go through that process if we think it's something that's fair and appropriate for the student athletes in that individual sport. That's kind of where we are generally, there's obviously a lot going on. If anybody has any questions about that or other things, I'd be happy to speak to it.
Just wondering what the non-waiver teams for the winter sports are? Those are non-eighth-grade waivers?
Non-eighth-grade waiver, cheerleading, I believe. So boys' basketball is using them at the freshman level, girls' basketball at the JV, hockey at the vars, boys' hockey at the varsity level, and indoor track, they all compete at the same event. There might be, so they'll be varsity as well. Girls' hockey, I did get the question, if you can participate, the MIA asks you to either use a co-op or an eighth-grade waiver. So Norwell made the decision to invite us to be their co-op partner, and that gets us to, we're either 17 or 18 girls, which is considered enough to have a program. Once you get to 15, they think that you have enough. So it's one or the other, so we went that route.
Peter, can I ask you a quick question on the regard in girls' hockey? So I know there was a girls' hockey player that played on the boys' team the past couple of years. If she chose, if she chooses to, can she still participate on the boys' team, or will this not allow her to anymore?
So she made the decision to play on the girls' team.
Okay. But she did, she would have still had the choice to play on the boys', or no?
We never got to the point, we had to make that decision. She made the decision that she wanted to play on the girls' team, so that was.
All right, thank you.
I think it helps, too. She probably gets more playing time, you know, it's big boys, don't have against her, so it's probably harder.
Yeah, I mean, it's certainly difficult to play a contact sport as a female against males. So it's good for the kids to have the opportunity to play against other girls.
She was amazing, though, I do honestly.
Yeah. And it's good that other, other grounds were able to get into it as well.
Yeah, no, it's great.
Yeah. Did you say that track is varsity, or is that, I'm just wondering?
Correct, yes, yep.
Can I just say thank you? Peter was asked to come here because of the committee's desire to stay in tune with how this eighth-grade experience is going. And then also, the shifting with the leagues, I think is important to just probably to highlight. This is not Peter Serino or the athletic department trying to game the system to get more wins and losses, because people will theorize about that. There's, there's a process that he described in detail. He doesn't have a comment FanDuel and Bet and Abington games. It's just, it was important to get that out there because, you know, people would want...
That does bring up one quick question. You mentioned that the MIA is realigning divisions a little bit. Is there a point where if, and I know sometimes we benefit from this, sometimes we don't, if there is a particular town that has dominated their division for years, do they take that into consideration and move that town up even though the population keeps them in a lower division?
No. So this year, they're using a new tool, the competitive equity tool. So instead of just using straight alignment, there's a number of factors that I won't go into here, that is designed to address some of those issues potentially. But they, the, if there's a formula that takes your base enrollment and then the competitive equity tool adjusts it, and that could result in you moving up or down, because you will then be aligned based off of your new enrollment.
Uncase the budget.
And I would, if anybody is genuinely interested in how the alignments work, I'd be happy to dive into it. It is new for the MIA, how they're doing it, and the other challenging piece is our league uses the October 1 enrollment from this year to determine the next two years. The MIA uses the October 1 enrollment from the last school year to determine the next two. So it's different, and for us, it was a 40-something student drop, so there's going to be some situations where our league has a school placed in a larger division, but the MIA has them placed below us, so it can be a little bit confusing.
So the girls' soccer team still has to play at Norwell?
Well, they will only, they will only have to play them once in the regular season now, but they get Cohasset twice.
All right, Peter, thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Next report on the MAS C delegate assembly. Heidi, I know you were the voting member, I also know Julie and Wendy were there, so I'll let you lead, but anybody who's there, feel free to add in as well.
Sure. So we had the ability to go to the conference, the MAS C conference, held down on the cake, and that was a lot of time to listen to audiobooks. Thank you to the committee, I was appointed to be the voting delegate. So we had voted, if anyone was here in the October meeting, we voted on six different issues, and it took just the low, low time of two hours for the committee to vote on the six issues. There were amendments made, but nothing that drastically changed the language of how we had initially voted. So I voted the way that I was tasked with voting here, and I can report that on all six issues, they were all passed in the same manner in which our committee overall voted to help them go. So if anyone has any questions or any questions on the discussion that happened, I am happy to answer those, call, email, I would say grab me on the soccer field, but summer season's over, so. And then I know I was there from Wednesday to Friday, went to a number of breakout meetings, talking about everything from school safety and mental health to newnessy things in arts and music, which was pretty fascinating. So again, if anyone has any questions about the things that I was able to hear, I'm happy to speak to you.
Great, great. Wendy, hi, Julie.
I was there for Monday.
Yeah, I only went for the first day because of work, so I don't have too much to add.
Girl was sick the last day, but it was really interesting. A couple of years ago, I wasn't a big fan of what they had going on, but I thought this year was much better, at least in, you know, what I got to see and be a part of.
Great, thank you, guys. Thank you all for going. Heidi, thank you for sitting through the two hours, if you guys have sit through the two hours too, so. But yeah, thank you very much. Up next, report of the superintendent of schools, Mr. Schaefer.
So we have the public, so we're required to have a public hearing on school choice if you're Massachusetts public school, that is the first part of this meeting. And then there's a question of school choice that comes before the committee every year. If the committee doesn't opt out of school choice, we automatically, we automatically in Massachusetts become a choice school system. That means that other students from other districts will be able to apply, to come to Abington, and we would educate them and be responsible for them until they graduate from high school. We are not overcrowded in Abington, we're tight in Abington with space. With the students from other districts, we'd come money from the state to help fund, to pay for education. I'm going to recommend to the committee that we do not participate in school choice in Massachusetts because we are tight. So even if we have the ability to hire the teachers that might be required, we don't have the physical spaces to put them in. So, you know, if you're an Abington resident, the good news and bad news is that you're living in a place where a lot of people want to live. Abington has seen some growth. That is prosperous, that's healthy for a community, that's been taking place over the years, the last couple of years. Also, we're retaining more students in the Abington public schools than we've ever retained before, which is also a good thing, because that means people are more invested in your community. The bad news is they need to be supported at a level which they all deserve. And so the priority for us, my recommendation is that we, we need to take care of those Abington students before we take on taking students from other districts, especially because we don't, again, have the classrooms for them. We are accommodating what we have. I am concerned that in the near future, Abington could be asked about the construction of an elementary school. That's not being asked tonight. However, if Abington continues to grow, that would be something that we would need to consider, the construction or the renovation of elementary space, because we have a place to put the children that's accommodating for elementary education. So you ready to answer any questions people might have? But my recommendation would be that we do not participate in school choice in the next school year.
If we opt out, that prevents students from outside Abington to come here, it does not prevent Abington students going to another town if their town allows it.
Exactly. And not all districts allow choice, some do, some don't, and you're right.
Yes, we get a ninth grade though, right? Or do they go?
We participated, a good question, Wendy, we participated in ninth grade last time because we had the space at the high school. And, but, a district can open up choice at whatever grade level they choose. Once you, once you accept those students, though, you're making the commitment, which is the right thing to do, to see them through to graduation.
When was the last time that we participated in school choice? It's been a few years.
It's probably been seven years, six years, it was, it was before this building.
I think since.
So I'll be looking for a motion, if anybody offers it, to opt out of school choice program for the 2023-2024 school year.
I'll make the motion.
On favor. Hi.
The next item I have for you?
Yep.
Is the update on a couple of searches we have. One is for the high school assistant principal, and the other one is for the fever book principal. In the topic, you have a tentative timeline for that, we want to go out just after the holidays, just after the first of the year, to try to have people in place. Hopefully I can bring someone to the committee February at some point. You've seen this process before, it's outlined here, part of that process is asking the committee for a member to serve on each of these search committees, and so, when the committee is ready to tell me who those people might be, when the chair is ready, we'll start the process, we're gonna start the process until January, but this is our last meeting before January, so I won't bring this to you.
Okay. I mean, if anybody wants to be on any of them, let me know, either now, you can let me know in email or text, that's fine, and I can let you know. And I'll let Peter know. All right. Thank you very much. And finally, so, next school committee meeting, we will not have any in December, there will be two in January, Tuesday, January 3rd at 7:00 PM, with, and that will also be our public hearing on the fiscal year 2024 preliminary budget, which will take place at 7:30. And then three weeks later, we'll have our regular school committee meeting on Tuesday, January 24th, both of them here. Dates to remember, Wednesday, December 7th, Abington Education Foundation meeting at Town Hall at 7:00 PM. Tuesday, December 13th is an in-service early release date for students. Friday, December 23rd through Monday, January 2nd is the holiday vacation break. The Monday, January 2nd, New Year's, all school offices and buildings closed. Are the school offices and buildings open Christmas week except for the 26th?
Tuesday through Friday.
Tuesday through Friday, open, okay, all right. So then I meant Tuesday, January 3rd will be our meeting. Saturday, January 7th, Abington Education Foundation trivia night returns to the Abington Knights of Columbus on Hancock Street at 7:00 PM. January 16th is Martin Luther King Day, all school offices and buildings are closed. And then, I'm gonna have to figure out which dates, right, but one of these days, the 25th through the 24th is the Tuesday, that'll be our meeting. And then I could visit early release date Friday, January 27th as well.
Can I add the junior class auction this Thursday?
Oh, yes. You know what, there was something I wanted to do, and yes, so the junior class auction is this Thursday, December 1st, here downstairs from 6:00 to 9:00 PM.
Can I also just get?
Lots of great, sorry, lots, lots, lots of great tickets, concert tickets, sports tickets, gift baskets, I mean, there's so much stuff, so get a jump on in, Christmas show.
Can I just get clarification? Can I just get clarification for, um, the trivia night for how to reserve tables?
There is a link on the AEF Facebook page.
Okay.
And they can register in a Google Doc and then send their Venmo or a check to one of the board members via.
Okay, so there's a link on the AEF page. Uh, will there be a constant contact or something sent out? Okay.
Information should be filed, they're not registered.
And press to, if, if we are looking at a Tuesday meeting as we generally do, it would be the 24th.
Okay, perfect, thank you. So, um, next, we're going to go into executive session by roll call vote for the purpose of updating the committee on negotiations with the Abington Education Association and the Superintendent of Schools salary opener. Holding this discussion open session may have detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the committee, and we will not return to regular session. Uh, roll call vote, I would say yes?
Yes.
Thank you all very much, have a wonderful holiday.